Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. I am Mayor Yumika Robinson and I am calling this meeting to order. Our regular city council meeting on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. Before the meeting starts, I want to ask everybody to please refrain from any conversations in the audience while the meeting is in session. That is a respect of out of everyone to be able to listen and hear the meeting while it's in session. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. The invocation will be led by Councilwoman Scott and the pledge will be led by Councilwoman Crosby. Can we please stand?
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you, dear God, for another day, another month. And I want to thank him for allowing me to see another year to celebrate my birthday this month. Because God has been so good to me, he allowed me to see seven to eight years. And I'm grateful just to be here. I'm grateful to be among the people, the citizens of Lake City and the surrounding area. We pray to heaven and fire, you are blessed each and every one here, and bless us that we have a successful meeting, that all that are well, that things go the way that he has seen fit for it to be. Blessed in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilwoman Scott. Thank you, Councilwoman Crosby. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council members?
Mayor Yumika Robinson?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Singletary?
Present.
Councilmember Willamina Scott?
Present.
Councilmember William Askins? Councilmember DeWannica Cooper?
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Plonny-Cross?
Present.
And Councilmember Jason Brown. Mayor Robinson, I find it of you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve the adopt the agenda as printed, please?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands, please. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, approval of minutes from the January 10th, 2024 regular mayor and council meeting and the minutes of the special meeting of January 18th, 2024?
Move to approve. Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands, please. Next on the agenda, we have introductions. We have two introductions of new employees of the city of Lake City. We have Ms. Annie Nelson and Ms. Laquantia Goodman, in that order, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor Robinson, Councilwoman Nicole Singletary, Sandra Feeney Crosby, Willamina Scott, happy birthday, DeWannica Cola Cooper. Good evening to you all.
Good evening.
Madam Clerk and Mr. Carter and all of you in his respected office. My name is Annie Nelson and I am the Conference Center Manager for the Cold Road Facility, working along with my colleagues and the administration who are just as anxious and excited to see the Cold Road facility completed. During my screening for this position, there were several questions that were asked, two that stayed stuck in my mind, my memory. The first was the reason why I applied for this position. And my answer was, I have 30 years of hospitality experience in event planning and worked in the hotel industry. But most importantly, I felt this job was created for me, serving the community and the surrounding area in planning their events or forum. This is not work for me, but it's fulfillment. I love accommodating people. Secondly, I was asked, when will I be able to start? My immediate response was ASAP. I am ready to roll up my sleeves. My colleague from the media department shone off Lake City on my first day, where one can live, work, play, visit, introducing me to several businesses and viewing all the wonderful things that are happening and the future plans for this beautiful city, which has actually won my heart. I am currently at this time pursuing residence and I do look forward to moving here from Greeleyville. So before I take my seat, I would like to quote three of many of Martha Luther-Quinn, Martha Luther King's juniors quotes. One, life must be persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? The other is, if you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, you have to keep on moving. Lastly, be a bush if you can't be a tree. If you can't be a highway, just be a trail. If you can't be a sun, be a star. For it isn't by size that you win or fail. Be the best or whatever you are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Laquantia Goodman. I'm the new grants accountant here with the city of Lake City. I am the mother of 15-year-old scholar athlete Desmond Williams. I've come to you from past experience or much past experience in grants, grants writing, grants administration. And so I'm happy to be here with the city of Lake City to help facilitate your grants and make sure that we are doing everything that we need to do to serve our grantors and the community of Lake City. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Nelson and Ms. Goodman. Welcome to the family of the city of Lake City. Next, we have presentations. We only have one tonight. We're going to have just the Green Finney Colley Audit Report presentation, and I'm just going to say Ms. Emily because I don't want to...
All right. Thank you. I'm Emily Sobcek. My name is tricky, I know. It has a Z in it, it just throws everyone off. But I'm with Green Finney Colley. I was the audit partner that oversaw your financial statement audit for the year ended June 30th, 2023. I'm thankful to have had the opportunity to work with the city for several years now. And so I will be presenting the results of that audit this evening. When it comes to the financial statement audit, the bulk of the responsibility lies with the city. And so you're depending on your team, Mr. Carter and his staff, to make sure that they are properly applying the policies and procedures that the city has adopted and included in those policies and procedures are internal controls that mitigate the risk of misstatement in your financial information. Because of course, you want to be able to rely on that information at year end for audit purposes, but also throughout the year as you're making strategic decisions on behalf of the city. Our responsibility then, as your auditor, is to audit that financial information that's provided and issue an opinion based on our audit. We have issued an unmodified opinion again this year. That opinion provides reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. So as I've mentioned in the past, a couple of key terms, we're providing reasonable assurance, which is a high level of assurance, but not absolute, because we're not looking at every single transaction that occurred during the year. Rather, we're using professional judgment and materiality in determining our audit procedures. We'll start by looking at your financial results for the general fund. The general fund had a decrease in fund balance of 1.1 million, bringing total fund balance for the general fund to 1.6 million as of June 30th. Included in that 1.6 million is non-spendable fund balance of 230,000. That represents prepaid expenses. So the cash is already out the door, but the expenditures will be recognized in fiscal '24. You also have restricted fund balance. That fund balance is restricted by state law for tourism. That amounted to 243,000. And you have committed fund balance of 956,000. These are amounts that are committed by council. And so those can also be changed through formal action of council. When we take out those designated balances, we're left with unassigned fund balance of 141,000. We like to compare that to your operating expenditures to gauge how healthy that unassigned fund balance is. And we're looking at a little under 2% for fiscal '23. That's a little lower than we'd like to see it. And the reason for that reduction in your unassigned this year was primarily related to capital items. So those are non-recurring items that occurred during fiscal '23. I do encourage you to work on making sure you have a good capital plan in place so that future capital needs have funding sources that you aren't always having to rely on your fund balance because of course, it is a non-recurring funding source. A number of different reasons why that fund balance is important. One is that you need to have that fund balance available to meet your cash flows during the second half of the calendar year as you wait for your property taxes to start coming in. Because of course, we're measuring your fund balance at June 30th, but property taxes generally don't come in until January. You also want to have some flexibility in future discretionary purchases. And having a good, healthy financial condition allows you to achieve the best interest rates possible when you do issue debt. Your general fund reported revenues of 9.5 million for the year. That was 17% higher than what you had budgeted. That increase was primarily related to grants that were unanticipated or not included in the budget. And your revenues were 1.8 million or 23% higher than the prior year, again largely related to grants that were used to fund some of those capital items. On the expenditure side, we reported 12.2 million in expenditures for fiscal '23. That was 27% higher than the prior year, primarily related to capital outlay, but also as a result of some increased personnel costs. And you did come in higher than budget, but again, that's due to some of those significant capital items that were not included in the budget. Couple of different reasons for that. One, some of those may not have been anticipated at the time the budget was created, but also capital needs that were financed through things like grants or finance purchase agreements were not coming out of your operating revenues. Next, we'll look at your enterprise funds. These are your water and sewer funds. Remember, when we're looking at your governmental funds, like the general fund, we're focused on current assets and current liabilities. Your enterprise funds, however, also report long-term assets and obligations as they are intended to run more like a business. So your water fund had an increase in net position of 133,000, bringing total net position for the fund to 8.9 million. Because we are reporting capital assets in your water fund, it's important to note that of that 8.9 million in net position, 8.3 million represents your investment in capital assets. So that amount is not in liquid form. Your water fund revenues did increase compared to the prior year by about 17%. And you also reported grant revenues in your water fund of 364,000 related to some capital projects. On the sewer fund, we also had an increase in net position. That net position increased by 2.5 million to 16.1 million as of year end. Included in that 16.1 million is 15 million representing your investment in your capital assets, less related debt. Your sewer fund operating revenues also increased by about 12% compared to the prior year. And your operating expenses increased by 1.6 million, partially as a result of that payment that was misappropriated, the payment to the contractor, as well as some emergency repairs that were incurred during the year. Your sewer fund had grant revenues of 4.5 million, primarily related to the wastewater treatment plant project as well as some other ongoing capital projects. Looking at total capital assets for the city, we have 48.6 million as of June 30th. That was an increase of 6.3 million compared to the prior year. You had a $1.8 million increase in capital assets for your governmental activities. And that was due to current year additions of 2.5 million, offset by depreciation expense of 719,000. One of your most significant projects on the governmental activity side is the recreation center. For the business type activities, so your water and sewer funds, you had a $4.5 million increase in capital assets as your current additions of 5.9 million were only partially offset by the depreciation expense of 1.4 million. Now looking at your long-term debt, you have total long-term debt of 15.3 million as of June 30th. 2.3 million of that is in your governmental activities. You did issue one new finance purchase agreement during the year. And you made principal payments of 586,000. and you made principal payments of 586,000. On the business-type activity side, we're looking at total long-term debt of 13.4 million. No new issuances this year, and principal payments totaled 443,000 for the year. Another long-term obligation that we continue to report are your net pension and net OPEB liabilities. Your net pension liability was 7.3 million as of June 30th. As you'll recall, that is not a direct liability of the city. Rather, that represents your proportionate share of the total unfunded actuarial liability of the retirement systems. And so while that liability is significant, it's not a balance that you're ever expected to write a check to try to pay off. Rather, what you are expected to pay is the employer contribution rates at the rates mandated by the state. And those rates have been steadily increasing for over 10 years now. For fiscal '23, we were at rates of 17.5% and 20.2%. Those had each increased by 1% compared to fiscal '22. And they have increased by an additional percent for fiscal '24, where we're now at rates of 18.5% and 21.2%. The good news is that there are no current plans in place to raise those any further. The bad news is, they're at a very high level. And so they do have a significant impact on your cash flows and your operating budget. And so it's very important that you factor that in when you're making personnel decisions. The net OPEB liability is a little bit different because the city does have your own retiree healthcare plan. And so city council has full authority to amend the benefits and contributions related to that plan. But it is similar to the pension liability in that it is an estimate. It's based on a whole lot of other estimates. And so slight changes in the assumptions that go into that calculation can have a significant impact on the liability itself. So in addition to the financial statement audit, we also perform your single audit. And that's the additional compliance audit that's required by the federal government in any fiscal year when your federal expenditures exceed 750,000. And so the program that we looked at this year was the program that was being used to fund the wastewater treatment plant project. And I'm pleased to say we have no findings related to that single audit. An additional opinion that we include in your report relates to our performance in accordance with government auditing standards. And so that opinion lays out our responsibilities under those standards. And one of those responsibilities is to identify in writing any significant audit adjustments that were required during the audit process. And so we do have a finding related to audit adjustments this year. There are a number of different adjustments that are only made at year-end. So as you're going through during the year, your monthly closeout process is a little bit simpler than your year-end closeout process. And so there were some additional accruals that were required to be recorded as part of the year-end audit. In addition to your financial statements, we also issue a management letter each year. That's primarily required communications from us to council and to management. And so I encourage you to read through that letter when you receive it because it does include some good information about the audit process. And then we also always discuss some more minor recommendations with... We discuss them with Mr. Carter, as well as Mayor Robinson and Mr. Hall during our exit conference meeting. And so we appreciate that they are always very open to our suggestions. In closing, another great job by your finance team. I would, like I said in the beginning, I think it's important that you really think about future capital needs, both for the governmental activity side, as well as your enterprise funds, to ensure that you're identifying funding sources for those needs over the long-term future. I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
Any questions, council?
There was a lot.
None.
Well, thank you so much again for the opportunity to work with the city. We really appreciate all of Mr. Carter's hard work and seeing the process through to completion. So, thank you.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Emily. Next in the agenda, we will have this public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. You can come forth and sign your name and other information that's needed on the paper up above or in front of us. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To mayor and city council persons and all other that are here, I came with two invitations this evening. On February the 22nd, at 10 o'clock a.m. in the morning at the memorial marker for Frasier Baker, who's our first black postmaster here in Lake City, who was, lost his life through lynching him and his daughter here in Lake City with a mob. So, community will have a memorial there on the 22nd at 10 a.m., and we inviting everyone to come. And also, this Sunday, February the 18th, at 6 o'clock, community is starting their monthly prayer back at the Lake City High School gym. We're inviting everyone to please come out as we come together as a city to pray for our city, pray for our schools. Have God lead us to pray, because it's such a time now we need to be praying because there are so many things that are going on. And also, I want to say to the mayor and the city council and to all of the here, because normally I come and I will lead in a prayer, but I just want to say tonight that I am still praying for the city, still praying for God to send us the right chief of police that we need, that we as Lake City will come together and work in unity. I'm praying for the health of all of us here in the city, and especially praying for our young people in the city, all over the city. And for the violence, praying for violence and everything to end in the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments tonight from the public? Okay. We're gonna move on to our legislative part of the agenda. And tonight, we have Mr. Brandon Carter, who is our executive finance director in the City of Lake City.
Yes. Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council, for your consideration, ordinance 2024.001, second and final reading. The ordinance expanded by Annex Influence County TMS 00195-31-041, said parcel being contiguous to the current corporate boundaries of the city owned by McLeod Regional Medical Center after PD, who has duty petition for annexation and all other matters related thereof.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.001 for second and final reading.
Move to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor, council. Mayor, council, ordinance for your consideration, ordinance 2024.002, second slash final reading. The ordinance of the City of Lake City, South Carolina, affirming and setting forth its document retention policy in all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.002 for second and final reading. Move to approve ordinance 2024.002, second slash final reading.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions?
Can you go in a little more detail about the document retention? If you have the information in front of you.
What was that?
I can speak to that, council.
Okay.
So the South Carolina Department of Archives has a municipal document retention policy, and all the city's doing is following.
Complying.
Adopting that, so it's adopted at your local level, as well as the state level.
Any other questions, council?
Okay, let me say the document retention policy. What documents would be included in that?
Really, anything that would be subject to FOIA request. It can break down all the way to emails, all the way up to storing of ordinances, odes, all those sorts of documents that are usual and customary to a city. They're trying to get rid of municipalities and counties and other agencies having documents for 10, 20 years. So they set forth three-year policies for some documents, five years for others. You gotta keep them forever on others. So it's just incorporating that here at the...
So any documentation related to the city, period?
Yeah, and it's available online. You can Google "South Carolina Municipal Archives, Document Retention", and it's the document that we're incorporating that's just right online. It's that exact same thing.
And for you guys that don't know, this is our city attorney, Mr. Charlie Arpat.
Any other questions, councilman? If none, all in favor, show of hands, please.
Thank you, mayor, council. Mayor, council, for your consideration, ordinance 2024.003, second slash final reading. An ordinance authorizing the execution of equipment lease purchase agreement in amount not exceeding 1,450,000 relating to the purchase of equipment and payment of related costs for the City of Lake City. Authorizing the execution of other necessary documents and papers in all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.003 for second and final reading. Move to approve ordinance 2024.003, second slash final reading.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor, council. Mayor, council, for your consideration, ordinance 2024.004, second slash final reading. The City of Lake City requires the current business license ordinance to adopt the latest standardized business license class schedule as required by the standardized act and to make other minor amendments as recommended by the association.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.004, the second and final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor, council. Mayor, council, for your consideration, resolution 2024.007, final reading. A resolution for the City of Lake City seeking mayor council approval to accept the bid from digging deep in the amount of $38,000 for the sewer collapse on Carver Street.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.007 for final reading.
Move to approve.
Second. Been properly moved in second. Any questions?
When do they get started?
I'm not sure, council.
What, do you know what part of Carver Street is on? Like, which end?
Ricky?
It says that at the intersection of Carver and Floyd Street.
Okay.
Kind of like right in front of there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor, council. Mayor, council, for your consideration, resolution 2024.008, final reading. A resolution for the City of Lake City seeking mayor council approval to request and submit an application to RIA in amount of $1 million for the Actline Drainage Project.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.008 for final reading. Move to approve resolution 2024.008 for final reading.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council? I would like to state for Actline Drainage Project, there's, some people think it's just Actline Street, but this project encompass other streets as well. I don't have the actual list in front of me, but just know that it encompass other streets around the surrounding area. Maybe Mr. Ricky can enlighten on some of those streets that's in that area.
Yes, probably the most, I don't even see an effect on it. Probably Thomas Street area where the flood is, and just about all the streets from Thomas Street, Lee Street, Epp Street, Actline, all the streets in that area. Wilcox, Florence, a portion of all those. It may not be the complete street, but the ends of the streets are the that you're connecting up to Macallister Street. All those, all those are affecting my mind. Epp Street, really, yeah.
Sounds great. Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you, Mr. Ricky.
Thank you, mayor, council. Next, I'll be going over the financials, period, ending in January 31st, 2024. I'm gonna start with the general fund. Our year-to-date actual is 4,764,849, which is 46.85% of the budget. We have expenditures of 6,58,124, which is 59% of the budget, which makes us, we overspent by $1,293,275. I'd like to remind council that we typically get run about two or three months behind in regards to taxes. For the water fund, our year-to-date is 1,301,598, which is 58.24% of our budget. And our expenditures is 1,112,331, which makes us a surplus of 188,767. Our sewer fund, our year-to-date is 3,648,138, which is 93% of our budget, which expenditures is 3,128,742, which makes us a surplus of 519,396. And our stormwater, our year-to-date is 128,416, and expenditures is 29,167, which makes us a surplus of 94,249. For our water and sewer reserves count, we're actually doing pretty well. For water reserve, our year-to-date is 43,015, and sewer reserve is 42,78 and 75 cents.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Mayor, council, before you, is the bills will be approved? For, if you have any questions, just letting you know.
I need a motion to approve bills items 1 through 10 for February 13th, 2024.
Move to approve bills 1 through 10.
Second. It has been properly moved in, properly moved in second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed?
Thank you, mayor, council. That's all I have for you today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Great job. Good job, Brendan. We do not have executive session for tonight. We're gonna move forward and end our meeting with council member and mayor reports. And we will start with councilwoman Scott. I'm sorry. It's your birthday.
It's my birthday. It's my birthday. I'm celebrating the whole month. I wanted people to have two birthdays, so anyhow, I just took February, so that's my month. In my family, you know, that works. But I'm grateful just to be here, and I'm grateful to be here to, evening, to see so many of y'all came out, to share their experiences, see what be going on in the city. And thank you, Mr. Carter, for your presentation tonight. We had a lot of sickness and stuff going on, but yet, you made it possible. So thank all of y'all for coming. And this is the heart month. It's the love month. I call it the heart month, the love month. So you don't love somebody, find someone to love. And be happy and be merry. Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you all for coming out. Also, welcome Ms. Nelson and Ms. Goodman to the team. I know a lot has been happening within the last few months, but we are moving forward, and we are working together to get things handled and situated. Also, for those who came out to the budget meeting on Saturday, thank you guys for coming out, forcing your concerns. Quick message to District One. If you have any concerns, ideas, or just any suggestions to help me better District One, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. You guys may see something that I don't see. So, once again, just please do not hesitate to reach out. If you cannot contact me directly, please come to the city hall, and they will get in touch with me. Thank you all. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you all, Happy Valentine's Day.
Good evening, thank you, thank you all for coming, and again, welcome, Mrs., two new employees, Laquantia, Laquantia, right? Ms. Laquantia Goodman.
Yes.
And Ms. Nelson.
Nelson.
N-E-L-S-E-N, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, welcome. We did a really good presentation to both of you there, and I'd like to dillow what council members say to you as soon also. If you see anything in District 2 that needs to be done, please do not hesitate to contact me, because you know, I got a big mouth, and I will address it as best I can. And then in the near future too, I don't know the exact date, but I'm planning a community gathering, and so information will be forthcoming, and with love for anyone, you don't have to be in my district, if you want to come, if you have any ideas, any suggestions on what we can do to bring the community together, address any kind of concerns that are plaguing the community. Doesn't matter how small, how large, bring it to me, and we will somehow try to get it resolved or dissolved, and other than that, did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Again, if you're becoming, you want my phone number, you can call me, 843-5984-067, anytime. Okay? And look forward to seeing you next month. Tell your neighbors.
I got my list. Of course, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Thanks to, again, everyone that came out to the budget meeting this past Saturday, and of course, like everyone else said, we encourage you to come out, because it's nothing like, again, it's nothing like getting that firsthand information with your own ears, not hearsay from anybody else. So again, I think we're having another meeting scheduled for March the 23rd?
Yes.
Okay, so, and of course, more information about that will be coming out, so there will be another budget meeting going on again next month, which is March 30, March 23rd. I guess it would probably be at the senior citizen again?
Continuum.
At the continuum, excuse me, at the continuum. So please be on the lookout for that information, because at the B market. Oh, okay. Hold on, we're gonna have another, to be announced for the location. Okay, so, yeah, so please come out. This is your way to voice your concerns for the community, so it's very important that you guys come out and be informed. Also, I would like to recognize the youth intervention employee that we have, Mr. Marcus McGurk. He is doing a great job, especially this week, because this week is youth intervention week, and they have started off, yesterday they were at the Rob, and they had them a cookout, and today they went to the boudoir. So they are doing it. So that is a good thing to get our youth involved, so it's a, he's a good person for Lake City, and of course, you've already seen that he is doing great things. So kudos to you, Marcus.
Hopefully he'll be introducing himself next month.
Okay, okay. Let's see, what else I have? And also, welcome to the new employees, Ms. Annie, I met you not too long ago.
Yes.
Yes, and I know that you're gonna do, both of you guys, both of you ladies, excuse me, are gonna do great things, and again, welcome to Lake City. My next thing is registering to vote. Of course, you know that it is election year, and my biggest thing is trying to get the youth to vote, because the youth are, well, the future is now, so we need to get them registered to vote now. So again, I throw these ages out, if they're gonna be 18 by October the 1st, please try to get them registered to vote, so that they'll be able to vote in the election. If they have already 18, please get them registered to vote now. I do have some voters' registration cards, and there are also some in the administration building. I'm also trying to plan something with Lake City High School, so that we can get these seniors registered to vote. Again, let's see, Happy Black History Month, and Happy Valentine's Day, and y'all have a great day. Y'all know I'm only one phone call away, and continue to stay vigilant and stay safe. Have a good night.
Well, I should be like Councilman Askins and say, no comment.
Because she took everything in.
But thank you. Ladies, I think we did very well tonight without the men, but thank everyone for coming out tonight. Thank everyone who is watching via Facebook. Thank council members for their reports on tonight. I would like to ask everyone to please take care of yourselves, your family members, because there's a lot of sickness and illness out here tonight. Just please pray for our families, pray for us individually, pray for us, our city, family. As you know, you see, Mr. Hall is not here tonight due to illness, so please keep him in your prayers, and others of our city staff. I appreciate the auditor for her report tonight, as we heard and could see that Lake City is going in a great direction. So I ask everyone to let's continue to work together, like Mayor Protem stated, so we can continue to see great things happen in the city of Lake City. Welcome our new employees, Ms. Annie and Ms. Laquantia. I'm trying my best to continue to say that right. We're glad to have you a part of the city of Lake City, and let me tell you, these two ladies have really been putting in the work already. Happy Valentine's Day. I love you all, your mayor love you. What's that?
I can say the location where we're gonna have Frazier Baker Memorial, you can just at the marker across from the Elks Lodge.
Okay, okay. I'll repeat that too, so in case someone didn't hear it on Facebook, but happy Valentine's Day and Happy Black History Month. Let's remember those who paved the way for us, especially those Lake Cityans like Frazier Baker. And like Ms. Paula announced earlier, that he was our first black postmaster in February 22nd at 10:00 a.m., there will be an event there in honor of Frazier Baker at the marker, which is on Church Street, right across from Wesley Chapel. Yes, in front of the Elks Lodge. We will have more information in the next few days about our search for a police chief, so listen up for that. I know everybody is just anticipating and waiting to hear more information about our search on new police chief. Thank everyone for coming to my city address. I really appreciate if you were there, I appreciate you if you could not make it and heard about it, and/or either looked at it on Facebook. I think it was a great success on that evening. Please, let's have a good night and be safe, and I'll look forward to seeing everyone. Oh, and I definitely want to say thank you again, Mr. Carter, for a job well done tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you.